Going to call the regular council meeting to order for March 4th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Moritz.
Here.
Sherick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Before your minutes from the February 12th public hearing, does anybody have any questions on those?
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Myers made motion to approve, Mr. Moritz seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. They are approved. Also, you have February 18th, regular council meeting minutes. Does anybody have any questions on those?
Motion to approve. Second again.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are approved. You also have February 24th, special council meeting minutes. Does anybody have any questions on those?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are approved. Granting permission for visitors to speak. If there is... Oh, hold on a second, I gotta go plug something. Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. The first thing I would like to point out that today on documents on demand, the revision one of tonight's meeting was never posted for the public to review. I don't understand why there's a problem and there's no checks and balances to make sure that is done. I believe that's another error in the council clerk's office. While this city is in budget problems, this council administration are spending money that you don't have. A former council member stated, if you don't have the money in the account, don't spend it. That is what you should be doing. That's what we have to do. What we do know is this, you're giving out big employee large raises, you're raising the water and sewer rates, you're not following the state laws on public records requests, you're instituting stall tactics on information, you're deleting information from public records, bad record keeping in public information reports and documents. What we do know is how much money does the city truly have? How much corruption is going on? What is being hidden by administration and city council? How much is the insurance really going to cost the city? Is the water fund broke? Yep, that's why the state auditor was here today. We were told that, and we were told though, we had to wait until the gap conversion was done. What changed? How much more are we going, are we, the taxpayers, going to pay for these big mistakes made by you? Why can't someone just stand up and admit they made mistakes? In the military, we call this manning up. Take and take responsibility for the actions. Why not just tell the truth? In the last week, I saw a city employee from the tax office make false statements on Facebook about the FER department. Is this the same type of stuff going on in the city website for meetings? These comments don't have anything to do about what truly is going on. Then you have three members of the finance committee having a meeting after the special council meeting on material bids, talking about the manpower raises. And then someone is not voting on something that certain people are to be removed. First of all, that was an illegal meeting. And secondly, why can't you talk about this in public meetings? Oh, that's right, you don't want to talk in front of the public. That is why the citizens of this committee doesn't trust you and what you are doing. I don't trust you. You're making bad decisions for the entire community. And you don't care. It is all about you and the city employees. So if this council is going to give out more raises, tax the people more, take away credits from us, go for it as other people have said, we the people have other avenues to go down. In closing, if you don't like the way I redress my government, too bad. If you wanted to make comments behind my back, I'm good with that, unless it goes against the law. You have no morals, no dignity, no values, no integrity. You are like a windsock at a car dealership, just blowing in the wind with hot air. Thank you.
I would like to comment to Mr. White's talk.
Okay.
First off, I'm going to assume, and of course, we all know when you do that, you make an ass of yourself, and I guess there's plenty of other people here that do that, but I'll be probably one of them. When you talked about the fact that there was three council members meeting after committee meeting to discuss and that that was held illegally, I'm assuming you were told that by Mr. Fankhauser. Is that correct, Mr. White?
I don't answer questions.
Yeah, you want transparency from us, but you don't want to give it.
But Mr. Fankhauser, did you happen to tell Mr. White, or are you going to say that you're not going to answer any questions?
Did you discuss things related to an ordinance with two other members of the finance committee after the...
Let me explain what happened there. Mr. Myers and I walked outside, stood there in the hallway, he and I were talking. He and I were talking. I believe Mr. Moritz will admit then, he walked into the meeting.
That's right.
And we did start talking. And then you brought up, oh, there's three of you here, you can't be doing this. We immediately stopped. Now, the question that I have of Mr. Goebrich, and correct me if I'm wrong, because, you know, I'm the one that's, you know, wants things done correctly. Did you not tell us that if there are... Let's see. If there is... Oh, how do I want to ask the question? If we have more of a quorum, let's just say, we had the three of us out there in the hallway. We are allowed to talk about things, but we're not allowed to make any decisions.
No.
We are not allowed to talk about anything.
Correct.
Okay, we are not allowed to talk about anything. And for transparency purposes, it started out with two people. And I will stand here and admit that, because there were just two of us. Now, should I have caught that when Chris walked in and was standing there and then made a comment or two? You're darn right I should have. And I commend you, Mr. White, for pointing out that I was in the wrong. There are many times I want to point out the inaccuracy comments that you make. And perhaps I ought to read the email that you sent to me, which you did give me permission to read. In fact, you know what? I am going to read that email.
Well, I think we're getting outside of the public participation portion of the meeting here, Vicki.
Excuse me?
I think we're getting outside of the public participation.
Then I will read the email at the end of this meeting, just as you allowed Mrs. Shireman to sit here and read her email and berate me left and right.
You can bring it up in new business.
Okay, great, we're going to do that. Thank you very much.
Ray Thadoff, 210 Ethel Street, being the public, can I request that I hear this email from Vicki DeShawn?
Sounds like she's going to read it during public participation, or not public participation, new business.
It's because you said you wouldn't let me read it now. I hope to God I have it here.
I'd like to request that she reads it right now. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
I do have a comment to Greg White about the documents on demand. The council clerk came up here and showed me, Jim, and you what happened with software with documents on demand. The documents are uploaded, the software made it blank. So you can't say that they weren't uploaded when you yourself came up here and saw that the file was there, but there's just nothing on it. That's not a clerk issue, that is a software issue, and that is not her problem.
You said one time.
Yeah.
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. I'd just like to remind council that they do have the right to amend any rulings made by the council president. So if they do want to hear the letter as requested by Ray Thadoff and go with his request, you're welcome to do that and vote on it.
Any other public participation? Seeing none, moving on to communications and petitions with first a letter from the
To Bussaras City Councils, subject Cruising with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show, the Bussaras Lodge Number 68 Fraternal Order of Police Inc., respectfully request permission to close the following streets on Saturday, June 14th, 2025, for Cruising with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show. We would like to close the 100 block of East Warren Street from 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM or midnight for the food court. Sandusky Ave from Mary Street to Oakwood Ave from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM or midnight. We also like to close Washington Square, 100 blocks of East and West Mansfield Street, 100 block of West Warren Street, 100 blocks of East and West Rensselaer Street, and the 100 block of East and West Charles Street from 12:00 PM until 12:00 AM midnight. Your attention and support of this matter will be greatly appreciated as this is a great event for our city. Respectfully, Tracy Keegan, Treasurer of the FOP Lodge Number 68.
We need a motion to refer this to health and safety for street closure for this. Mr. Myers has made a motion to refer the Cruising with the Cops to health and safety for their event for the street closures. It was seconded by Councilwoman Sherick on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. It has been referred. Also need a motion to accept and file the letter.
Second.
Who made that first?
I did.
Ms. Sherick made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Letter has been accepted. Standing committee reports, plating committee chair, Mr. Me.
Great news, we're having an expansion at the hospital, I guess, and they want to vacate Pleasant Hill Drive, not to be confused with Plansway. This is Pleasant Hill Drive, and they want to vacate the north part of it. So we need that to refer to plating. That's it.
Any questions for plating committee?
Second, ma'am.
Mr. Me, you made the motion to refer the vacation...
Yes.
Of, and it was what street?
Pleasant Hill Drive.
Of Pleasant Hill Drive to plating. Mr. Myers has seconded that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. It has been referred. Next up, public lands and buildings, Chair, Ms. Sherick.
Do you have signs saying the property that you share?
I did see those.
Yeah? Campus.
I've actually had comments on it, the people have seen them too. Those who paid attention to them.
Any other questions for health and safety?
No, the people of that building.
I'm sorry, public lands and buildings. Seeing none. Health and safety, Chairwoman, Mrs. DeShawn.
Discussion was held at the February 20th, 2025 Health and Safety Committee meeting on 450 Dudley Street, the criminal ordinance package, and the taxi cab insurance requirements. End of my report.
Any questions for health and safety? Seeing none. Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Myers.
I was going to discuss a meeting that I was a part of today, but I'm going to not do that at this point because the auditor is going to have that in her report.
Any questions for finance committee? Any movement on what we think how we're going to start operating, not in a deficit on the general fund side, any, you know, following up from our town hall?
Yeah, I've got some questions I'm waiting on answers for, and I think I will follow up with all those people that I'm waiting on answers for with some emails tomorrow morning or tonight.
Okay.
So hopefully I'll have maybe some answers Thursday.
Okeydoke. Next up, economic development, Chair, Mr. Hickman.
Do not have a report this time.
Any questions for economic development? Mr. Hickman, did you... There was an email and I sent it about Governor Dewine having a rural housing project. Did you see that?
I did see that, I did not read it in extension, but I want to read it with the administration when I have time.
Okay, well, you meet with them. I really think we need to be on top of the housing, any sort of money for housing, building the roadways and the underground sewer and water lines. If we can get any money for that, I really think we need to stay on top of that. Mr. Me.
Yeah, you sent us that map of that property on the north end. Did you see where the sewer line runs? It runs diagonally through that, it just spurs up everything on building up there. Because it runs...
You couldn't spur off of it and go down the...
But you'd have to actually move it.
Yeah, you can't build on top of it.
Can't build on top of it.
On that entire area?
Maybe over in a little bit of corner, but that's about it.
I don't know if I necessarily buy that.
I don't know. Would you like to...
There are multiple sewers crisscrossing those lots up there in the north end, more than just sanitary.
It's totally unbuildable.
Without relocating two sanitary lines and probably one or two storm sewer lines, you'd have to move it once you run the streets in. You would still have to put new storm sewers in and run new sanitary because all the sanitary connections for houses.
What about potential other areas of town? It is being looked at, is Mr. Hickman involved in the...
Yeah, the thing that you sent him, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're doing something here, and we need all the housing we can get, so.
We're working on it, buddy.
Alrighty. Any other final questions for economic development?
I need about six, eight million. That would probably do it for us. So, any donations you got, perfect.
Couple too many zeros for me.
Me too, buddy.
Moving on, service committee chair, Mr. Moritz.
Still waiting on administration, all the administration to get back with Brandon to make sure all the changes we wanted to do are right, excuse me, law director are right, and we don't have to go back through them again, other than that, nothing at this time.
Any questions for service committee? Seeing none. Special ad hoc committee for rules of procedure, Mrs. DeShawn.
As previously reported, the special ad hoc committee met on December 17, '24, and at the request of Law Director Goebrich, decided to pass the rules of procedure and the codified ordinance chapters 111 and 113 over to Mr. Goebrich to start from scratch. He will prepare new drafts for the committee to review and discuss. A reminder that he stated, this is not something that will be done immediately, it is a big project that will take some time. At the February 4th, '25 council meeting, Mr. Goebrich stated that he will provide to the committee members each section as he completes it. End of my report.
Any questions for the special ad hoc committee?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Our law director is doing an outstanding job of everything we've been throwing at him to try to get everything that we put a lot on his plate, and he is doing an outstanding good job doing it.
Well, thank you.
I will agree with that, and I see his car many a times up here when I drive past City Hall in the wee late hours of the night, and I assume he's working on just playing catch-up from all the stuff that got built up before he came into office, so. Moving on, special ad hoc committee for property maintenance, Mr. Me.
May 10th, 4:00 PM is our next meeting. That's it.
March 10th? That's this month, not two months ago?
I got it on my calendar, right? March. March. March 10th, 4:00 PM.
Any questions for the property maintenance special ad hoc committee? Seeing none. Special ad hoc committee for zoning map, again, Mr. Me.
March 13th at 4:00 PM will be our next ad hoc meeting.
Any questions for the special ad hoc committee for the zoning map? Seeing none. Traffic Commission, Mayor Truca.
No report.
Any questions for traffic commission? Seeing none. I need a motion to accept all the committee reports collectively.
Second.
Ms. Sherick made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Reporter of city officers, Mayor Truca.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration met with Doug Foote and Adam Heinlein from the Browners Festival. The administration used the facts and figures compiled by Auditor Kaylee Lewis. The agreed upon total amount was for $8,000 for a one-year contract between both parties. The administration requests legislation for the one-year contract. Civil Service Commission member Scott McBride's term has expired, and we will be contacting him for possible reappointment. The administration had made a list of contractors that are available for hire, that are able to install water lines, water service lines, from the main water lines outside the city limits to their private individual homes. Bussaras Water Distribution Department is compiling a list of potential customers, starting with Osceola, and they will be going door-to-door to contact the area residents regarding water line hookups. The administration sat down with the Airport Commission and the service chairman in a Zoom meeting with CMT consultant Ben Cooley, dealing with the design of the Port Bussaras terminal that was chosen by the Airport Commission. The administration had a meeting with the owners of Wesler Engineering Company as they are designing the future wastewater treatment plant. The meeting was very productive as to the future plans dealing with Ohio EPA and the United States EPA criteria. AEP slash Ohio, and it's an AEP company that's in Bussaras, contacting residents with yellow door hangers. This is pertaining to electrical line clearance between the power lines and the nearby trees. The city of Bussaras welcomes a new business into the community, J.C. Wellness Solutions LLC, located at 201 West Charles Street, Suite B. They offer individual therapy, couples counseling, and group therapy with the options of being in-person or by telehealth. The administration met with a representative from Governor Mike Dewine's office. This meeting was to meet the contact person for Northwest Ohio that the city of Bussaras belongs to in this region. End of report, thank you.
Questions for the mayor? The meeting with Dewine, it said they're looking to put somebody in...
No, we just met the contact person.
Okay, they don't want to have like a sub-office in our building?
No, no. It was just nice to meet the person that is actually from Governor Dewine's office.
The Browners Festival, we need to make referral for that?
She has to finance.
Is already in there?
Well, I wondered that. I wondered if it's already in there. Vicki's checking.
I don't forget that part yet, do we? We were asking about that last time.
It didn't fall out of finance when we passed the last legislation for it?
It's still listed as a open project dated 12/17/24 with the last movement being 1/23/25.
I thought it was already in there.
Yep.
The Airport Commission meeting, I attended that, the mayor attended that, Councilman Moritz attended that, and so with the way that the grant for the new terminal building is, they need to be going out to bid on that sometime, I think in April, and there was a deadline of sometime in May, that they had to have something under contract, I believe. So we discussed the timeline with council, and we determined that we need to put that going out to bid, authorizing the service director to go out to bid for the airport terminal into committee, and the next regular council meeting, two weeks from tonight, we need to be passing that in order to authorize a safety service director to go out to bid because otherwise we're going to miss the deadline with the FAA. So I would like to refer the terminal bidding, terminal building legislation to authorize to go out to bid to finance and service both. Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherick seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. And I believe that's it with the mayor's report.
Mr. President, is waiting until that next council meeting give enough time?
Yeah, we discussed that. So they're still putting the final touches on their design, and we're just authorizing the service director to go out to bid, but they did say they were going to hope to have some sort of finalized conceptual design for us at the next regular council meeting two weeks from tonight. Okay, moving on, service directors report, Mr. Starnar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration held a board of control meeting for the opening of the bids for the parking lot of Wendy's, around Wendy's on Monday, March 3rd, 2025. The northern lot sold for a minimum bid of $40,000. Administration will hold another board of control this Friday, March 7th, 2025, to open bids for the North End Fire Station. Those that are interested in submitting for the bids, the North End's Fire Station, will need to submit all required items by Friday, March 7th, before 10:00 AM. Daylight savings time is this Sunday, March 9th, which means spring is almost here. Don't forget to move your clocks forward one hour. And I would like to refer the Sandusky, the South Sandusky Waterline Project to the Service and Finance Committee for further discussion. And good news is Forge Fire announced that they're hiring up to 30 positions, so they're...
Is that the old Marvin Keystone?
That's the old Marvin Keystone Building.
I said 40?
30.
30.
Yep.
Need a motion for the referral for the South Sandusky Waterline to Service and Finance? Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherick seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Any other questions for service director?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Is the compost site open yet?
Compost site is not open yet.
You have a date that you anticipate being open?
We're still grinding. We're still grinding from last year.
Days, weeks, months?
I would say a month-ish. Any other questions for Service Director, Ms. Sherrick?
Well, first of all, the clocks ahead is this Sunday, 2:00 in the morning. But also, it's not really his, but we just skipped over this thing from Ruth on the back about the Planning Commission needing to be referred.
On the back of your report?
On the back of his report, there's a letter from him about the Planning Commission.
Okay, so there is a letter from the Planning Commission here, came from Mayor Truca.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we're getting it right here.
Was this supposed to be under Communications and Petitions?
No, that's typically where you put it.
We, Vicky is right, it's typically under there.
I have a suggestion. I'll make a motion to refer it to Health and Safety and Plating. And then the letter can be read at those committees on Thursday.
That's a good suggestion, Mr. Myers. Mr. Myers made a motion to refer to plating and health and safety. This Planning Commission letter regarding marijuana proposed establishment. 1193.01 authorized locations for adult use in medical marijuana facilities. So this is to set the zoning for where we're going to allow?
Yeah, just I'll re- say just the plating, not health and safety.
Okay, just plating.
It's already in plating, it came out of plating and went to.
Oh, okay. I was just trying to help because I just skipped the letter.
Okay, so it's
It does need to be referred back because you referred it out of your committee into a different commission, if that makes sense. So it needs to come back to you guys.
I'd like to refer to plating.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded to refer this marijuana zoning to plating, marijuana facility zoning. All in favor? All opposed? Now we're back to the Service Directors' Report, and if anybody had any questions for the Service Director. Daylight savings time, it's spring ahead, fall back. So move your clocks ahead on March 9th. That's how I always remember it. You spring ahead and then you fall back. So seeing no other questions for the Service Director. Law Directors' Report, Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since our last council meeting, then sitting Councilwoman Carolyn Shireman has resigned. This means that the voting requirements for council, based on my understanding, has been reduced to six total council members until a vacancy, the vacancy has been filled. A voting majority will need to be four out of six. A two-thirds majority will be need to be also four out of six. And a three-fourths majority will also will need to be five out of six. Regarding 450 Dudley, I would like to express gratitude to Mrs. Deschawn for getting the information together for the next kin regarding 450 Dudley. On March 1st, I made a trip and knocked on a couple of doors. I found both next to kin that are on the deed and have hand-delivered letters indicating the need for a meeting and an explanation of the situation. I haven't heard anything back from either of them, but we're making progress. At least I know where they are now. I'm now qualified in the Northern District of Ohio, federal court, and I'm working on getting Title IX, the Rules of Procedure, and all outstanding legislation done. With, if everything goes right, I should have the first section of the Rules of Procedure done for Thursday, as well as Title IX, but it won't be in time for it to be in the package, probably. And that's my report.
Any questions for the Law Director?
Yes, ballpark guess on how much you're looking to save the city by taking care of that federal stuff that you did? Do we know what that's cost us in the last couple of years, any?
Each case is different. Each case, impossible to tell.
Potentially thousands of dollars?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
That's what I was looking for.
What type of cases go to the federal court with the city of Bucyrus?
Usually anything to do with civil rights or a constitutional question or diversity jurisdiction.
So if like, for example, if a law enforcement officer was accused of violating somebody's civil rights and they filed a lawsuit, that would not go to local common police court? Here, that would go to the federal court?
If they filed it under federal law? Yes. However, probably wouldn't handle that one. That's a very specialized area of law.
Did we have any federal court cases last year?
Yes, we did.
We did? More than one?
I don't know the number.
Okay. This thing here, this number one on your report here that says that the quorum numbers and stuff has changed due to us being down one council person. Is, if you got it, have you found any case law on that or any AG attorney opinion? Or where are you coming up with this from?
That's my understanding. Now that we don't have a council member occupying that seat for the time being, it takes it down to six sitting council members. It was different when Mrs. Shireman couldn't be here. It takes it down, just like with a committee meeting.
So I believe this has came up before, and in the past, we still needed the, because the law says that a city shall have a minimum of seven members on its legislative body. So even if the seat is vacant, that law saying that it's a seven-member body stills going to require the six votes to waive the second and third reading and the five votes to pass as emergency. So is there any, can you maybe further research this out?
I can do that.
Because I don't want to
Tell me what you were looking at that brought you to that conclusion?
The 731.01 on the ORC states that legislative authority composed of not fewer than seven members, so.
No, I'm aware of that, but where you're what you were looking at that says that it doesn't shrink when there's a vacant seat for voting purposes?
So this has to have come up somewhere in Ohio before.
Correct.
So let's find where this has come up and get the case law that backs it up.
Okey-dokey.
So that being said, I don't feel comfortable passing legislation tonight with these lower amounts of votes. I'm still gonna want to see six members to waive a second and third reading and five members to pass something as an emergency. Because I don't want to get us in trouble.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for the Law Director? Auditor's Report, Ms. Luce.
Today's luck council members administration, I met with representatives from the local government services at branch of the state auditor's office regarding the Waterworks Fund. They gave us helpful information on steps to take to correct the negative balance. These steps include raising rates, which administration did as of January 1st, 2025, stopping all Waterworks projects unless the bond could be taken out in advance for the project, and speaking with bond councils, Spire, Patton, and Boggs in order to issue a bond for the 2024 projects that did not have adequate funding prior to the beginning of construction. I have a meeting scheduled with bond council, which I have invited administration to be present for on Thursday morning, 3/6/2025. I will also ask bond council if they're willing to present, whether physically or virtually, at a finance committee meeting to explain the intricacies of the bond when appropriate. As taking out bonds is a lengthy process, we may need to hold special meetings in order to make this a speedy process. I will keep you informed as I gather information. Income Tax Office is starting their extended hours for tax season. For March, the hours are Fridays, 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM. Saturdays, 8:00 AM through 12:00 PM. Mondays, March, Monday, March 31st, 8:30 AM through 7:00 PM. I would like to refer to Finance Committee, Waterworks Debt Recovery. I would also like to refer appointments to the Local Board of Tax Review. Miranda was able to pull the previous resolution, so if you would like to review it, it is numbered 213-2023. Thank you.
The Waterworks Debt Recovery Referral, so at the last meeting, I had requested to refer the whole Waterworks Fund itself to committee. My anticipation of that was because of this debt referral. So I feel like it's already in committee for the purpose that it was supposed to be in there. But if we want to refer it again, just to
Just to be safe, if you don't mind.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded on favor. All opposed. It has been referred, and then this Finance Committee for this local Board of Tax Review. Anybody want to make that referral? Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded on favor. All opposed. Any questions for the auditor? I did sit in on this meeting here with the local government services this morning, and so did Finance Chair Myers and Mrs. Deschawn. And we got a better understanding of where we're at with the water fund. We're gonna have to get a bond to get out of this problem. That's why this bond is being referred. And so I think it's gonna be discussed more on Thursday because you're gonna have the meeting in the morning. Okay. Seeing no other questions for the auditor, I'm gonna move on to the Police Chief, February 2025. Letter. I guess we need a motion to accept and file his February report.
Chief Ostenheimer asked me to read it since he couldn't be here.
Oh, go ahead and read it then, Mr. Gilbert.
In February of 2025, Bucyrus police officers were involved in a total of 655 incidents, which is an average of 24 incidents a day. There were 124 traffic stops in which 14 tickets were issued. Of the, of the tickets, eight were for driving under suspension and four for operating without a valid driver's license. Seven people were arrested for operating a vehicle while intoxicated, and officers made two felony drug arrests. Officers responded to 14 domestic calls, one overdose, one assault, 14 crashes, four private property crashes, 44 vehicle lockouts, and seven larceny complaints. Dispatchers handled 17 emergency medical dispatch calls. On February 4th, 2025, officers assisted Crawford County Sheriff's Office on Tiffin Road as they were investigating a burglary just outside the city. Later in the shift, at around 12:30 PM, officers again assisted the sheriff's office in the Red Oak Drive area as a suspect had fled from a deputy. Once on scene, officers learned the deputy had interrupted a burglary in progress at a residence on Red Oak Drive. Bucyrus police officers handled the burglary investigation on Red Oak Drive. A suspect was indicted on one count of second-degree felony burglary and one count of fifth-degree felony breaking and entering. The suspect was later linked to the Tiffin Road burglary by the sheriff's deputies. On February 17th, 2025, Officer Taylor Carver stopped a vehicle for driving with no headlights on. Officer Wireman and K-9 Capone assisted at the traffic stop, and Capone alerted to narcotic odor on the vehicle. During a search of the vehicle, officers located 6.5 grams of methamphetamine and seven gabapentin pills. One female was arrested and charged with a third-degree felony offense. On February 27th, 2025, Officer Devin Wireman stopped a vehicle as he knew the driver was driving under suspension. K-9 Capone alerted to no narcotic odor, and approximately seven grams of meth were found in the driver's purse. An additional 4.4 grams of meth were located concealed under, on the driver's body at the jail. The woman was also charged with third-degree felony drug offense, and that is his report.
We don't have to vote on accept that. We can just accept it as a final vote, right, on all the end of all these reports?
Yes.
Because we haven't been accepting the, have we been accepting the fire report?
I think we do, but I've often questioned why. I agree with what you just said. I think
Yeah, it's like, why, why vote on it twice, you know?
I wondered that for years.
Yeah, let's just, for the sake of speeding it up, let's just start doing it that way. So moving on to the Fire Chief's report, he does have a year-end. 2024 year-end. It's quite thick here. Haven't had a chance to review it, but what's that?
It does have a thing about the ASO and the PPC classification. Do we know what ours is?
We just went from a five to a four.
So we're at a four?
So we lost? No, that's good.
That's good. The lower the number, the better.
10's damn near uninsurable. It goes from one to 10. So we went from a five to four, which is great. It lowers insurance costs.
So I need to contact my insurance agent?
It should automatically be done with every insurance company that's licensed to do business in the state of Ohio on an annual basis. But if your policy doesn't renew for a long time, yeah, you could probably call them and see if they could manually push it through.
Okay, since he's not here, we can't ask him questions.
One thing I did want to point out too, I know like you just said, there's a lot of information in there. The one thing that I thought was very telling or good news in this is our revenue collected from EMS runs in the year was 583,000. And as you remember, when we were first starting to look at this, we were thinking that $250,000 to $300,000 would be the number that we thought we were gonna bring in in EMS billing. So it's considerably more, almost double what we had initially talked about.
So something happened with the Medicare, the Medicaid this year that brought in an additional 200,000 that they
Well, last year we were at 568,000, and it just went to 583,000. So it went up 15,000 to 18,000 this year.
First from our guests is what we bring in versus what the actual figures are. When we were first talking about bringing the EMS in, those were the numbers you guys were throwing out.
Yeah.
Regarding the Medicaid and Medicare thing, I believe the Fire Chiefs said that they were anticipating it, were anticipating an increase. I don't know if it's actually happened at this point.
For this coming year, for '25.
Yeah.
So I need a motion to accept all the City Officers' Reports. Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded on favor. All opposed. Visitors input regarding reports of standing slash special committees and of city officers. Any visitor input?
Yeah, Logan Beeman, Freewar. I had a reader who, I know, Mr. Gilbert brought up the Ms. Shireman. They wanted to know, they're asking about the pay, her pay, because she missed so much. And then I also have a public records request from 2000, from '21. Carolyn Shireman, 1065 East Beale, read a letter she had written to council. In the letter, Shireman questioned why all of council is not required to attend all meetings when they are paid by the city's city residents' tax money. She asked where the money from the CARES Act was spent and why there was not a public not a publication of where the money went. Shireman was provided a copy of the auditor's statement of cash positions and told where you find the information in the future. So, even previous Carolyn had this question. So, I'm kinda curious where we are with that. I know she's not a councilman anymore, but was her pay docked?
Her pay is docked for the regular council meetings that she missed, because that's the only thing in the ORC that allows for docking of pay. It can't be docked for any of the committee meetings. And Gary Miller had been-
This isn't Gary Miller.
Well, he had come up and he had questioned several times on the docking of the pay, and then he came up the final time and said, oh, yeah, I have found out that the pay was docked.
Okay.
And then, so when she resigned, her last month's pay will be prorated to the date of the month that she resigned. So, she's not currently being paid now.
Well, I assume, yeah. But just for the time interest. Okay, thanks.
Any other visitors' input? Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance 12-2025. It's the 2025 Manpower Ordinance. An ordinance amending ordinance number 20-2024, establishing a compensation in human resource staffing, sick leave, and vacation of employees of the various departments in the city of Bussaras, Ohio, and enacting in its place legislation pertaining to the compensation in human resource staffing, sick leave, and vacation of employees of various departments in the city of Bussaras, Ohio, commencing retroactively to January 1st, 2025, and declaring an emergency. Proposed ordinance 13-2025. It's Bussaras Codified Ordinance 1187.021, or PONs, establishing section 1187.021, entitled PONs, and chapter 1187, entitled Additional District Standards under Title XI, entitled Additional Zoning Requirements under Part XI, entitled Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bussaras. Proposed ordinance 14-2025. It's Bussaras Codified Ordinance 1193.01, Solar Panels. Establishing section 1193.01, entitled Solar Panels, under chapter 1193, entitled Solar Panels, under Title XI, entitled Additional Zoning Requirements, under Part XI, entitled Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bussaras. Proposed Resolution 210-2025. It's 316-320 Woodlong Ave. That's changing it from AR to R3. A resolution amending the official zoning district map to officially rezone 316 Woodlong Avenue to 320 Woodlong Avenue from designation Apartment Residential District, or AR, to Urban Neighborhood Residential District, or R3, and directing the Engineering Department to effectuate this change post haste, and directing the mayor and council president to sign and set up an official zoning district map upon said changes being
Need motion accept as first reading?
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. On the manpower thing, I think we need to table this until the city gets a better handle on the finances. I believe that Mr. Myers has brought that to the attention, too, until we can find out what is going on with the deficit and where this money's gonna come from. I think this needs to be tabled until further. I also don't think that this should be retroactive back to January 1, because that's just a waste of money that the city doesn't have. Thank you.
Any other public participation? Consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
Proposed Resolution 207-2025. It's ODOT State Route 4 North Project. The following resolution enacted by the City of Bussaras of Crawford County, Ohio, here and after, referred to as the city in the matter of the stated described project. Proposed Resolution 208-2025. It's Bratwurst Festival Street closures. Authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Bussaras, Ohio, to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorize the emergency personnel for the 2025 Bussaras Bratwurst Festival according to the schedule set forth herein. Further, authorizing and directing the chief of police to make necessary arrangements for the rerouting of traffic on federal, state, and local highways and roadways.
Need motion accept as the second reading?
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the second time.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. I'd like to ask the question. On the Route 4 project, are we gonna replace the water lines under that section that they're gonna be doing, or are we gonna not replace those lines since we're gonna replace the sewer lines? Or are we going to have to, because it's my understanding that those water lines are not the greatest shape under there. Is that why we're going for the bond also?
So, you're talking the north end. This Route 4 North is a totally different-
Okay, that's our project. Okay, thank you. I just wanna make sure.
Any other public participation? Consideration of proposed legislation for the final time.
Proposed ordinance 10-2025. It's Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 704, Medical Marijuana. An ordinance amending and supplementing Part 7 of the Bussaras City Ordinances and creating Chapter 704, entitled State Licensed Medical Marijuana Cultivators, Processors, Retail Dispensaries, and Testing Laboratories, under Part 7, entitled Business Regulation Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bussaras, Ohio. Proposed ordinance 11-2025. It's Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 705, Adult Use Marijuana. An ordinance amending and supplementing Part 7 of the Bussaras City Ordinances and creating Chapter 705, entitled State Licensed Adult Use Marijuana Cultivators, Processors, Retail Dispensaries, and Testing Laboratories, under Part 7, entitled Business Regulation Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bussaras, Ohio.
Need motion accept as the final reading?
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the final time. Okay, no public participation. Refer back to originating committee. Ordinance 10-2025 is referred back to health and safety. Ordinance 11-2025 is referred back to health and safety. Ordinance 12-2025 is referred back to finance. Ordinance 13-2025 is referred back to plating. Ordinance 14-2025 is referred back to plating. Resolution 207-2025 is referred back to service. Resolution 208-2025 is referred back to health and safety. Resolution 210-2025 is referred back to plating. Committee report on pending legislation, Health and Safety Committee.
Health and Safety Committee is favorable to proposed ordinance number 10-2025, dealing with the creation of Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 704, Medical Marijuana. Health and Safety Committee is favorable to proposed ordinance 11-2025, creation of Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 705, Adult Use Marijuana, and Health and Safety Committee is favorable to proposed Resolution 208-2025, Bratwurst Festival Street closures.
Finance Committee.
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 12-2025, the 2025 manpower.
Plating Committee.
Plating Committee is favorable to proposed ordinance 13-2025, BCO 1187.02 PONs. Plating is favorable to proposed ordinance 14-2025, BCO 1193.01, Solar Panels. And plating is favorable to proposed Resolution 210-225, 316-320, Woodlong, AR to R3.
Service Committee.
Service is favorable to proposed Resolution 207-2025, ODOT State Route 4 North.
Further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 12-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency? Okay, that one, we did not get a motion. We're gonna move on to the next one. Actually, these next two are regular pieces of legislation, so we don't have to do the emergency thing. All we need is a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 10-2025. Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshaun?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Ordinance 10-2025 is duly adopted.
I have a question.
Ms. Sherrick.
The previous one, that 12-2025, wouldn't that be just held to the first reading?
That is correct. It is held to the first reading.
Thank you.
And then the next one, which is ordinance 11-2025, do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 11-2025?
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshaun?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Ordinance 11-2025 is duly adopted. Old and unfinished business. Does anybody have any old and unfinished business? Okay, we're gonna move on to new business, and Mrs. Deshaun had a letter from Mr. White.
Yes, before I read Mr. White's email to me, I'd like to point out that he has left council. He's chose not to stick around and be present while I read. This email's dated Wednesday, February the 12th, 2025. The email came about as a result of the town hall meeting, which was held on February the 11th. At that meeting, Mr. White spoke and made the comment that he was not getting replies to his public records request. At that time, I asked him, who did he give those public records requests to? And he informed me that that was to the administration. So, here is his email that he has sent as a follow-up. Dear Vicki, sending you my two public records requests for your reference. It was for the Insurance Commission, Committee over the insurance for city employees. This request has been stalled by the law director. I don't understand why, since it deals with taxpayers' money for their insurance. These requests were hand-delivered to the mayor's office. It seems that the city of Bussaras doesn't want to be transparent with information that is vital to the taxpayers of this community. It truly showed last night at the so-called town hall meeting. It was a careful narrative and staged event to confuse the citizens of this community. The S-show in prime time and the lies and cover-up of what is actually going on in city government. Even the law director told the auditor not to say anything, that it would cause more panic. My public records request will be hand-delivered or done in person from now on. Since there is a leak within city hall, and how you wanted to know about this request just proved that such requests by email are being shared outside the scope of the state law. Thank you. You seem upset and nervous when I redress my governmental body. I don't understand why. Hell, when Gary Miller, Max Miller, Clarissa Slater, and others come up to speak about certain things, you cherish, foster, and give them your utmost attention. Yet with me, you despise, look angry, inflamed, even cringing when I come up to speak. You have violated my constitutional rights of free speech and to redress my government. You also say nasty things to me and about me. Even the law director has advised you about this. I am not at war with you, just trying to get our city government to tell the truth and be transparent with everything. So, if you want to hate me, so be it. I like haters and haters showing their true colors when they hate. So, please read this email during meetings. I don't care. Maybe those rumors about you and some loved ones' last wills or changing of them might be true or not. Don't have all the facts on this yet.
So, at the beginning, it starts with him admitting that you asked him about the fact that he was complaining about records requests not being filled, but somehow that was a leak? So, he stating it was a leak with, okay, just asking.
Yeah, well, and this is how I, you know, wanting to respond to Mr. White, which, again, I will reiterate, chose to leave the council chambers. Mr. White, I do not hate you. Mr. White, I am publicly requesting the following from you. A list of the dates when you allege I have violated your constitutional rights of free speech. A list of the nasty things you allege that I have said to you and about you, and the alleged dates that they were said. A list of the alleged city matters that I have not told the truth about, and a list of the alleged matters I have not been transparent about. Further, since I made no reference to an email when I questioned you, and this is in reference, questioned you at the town hall meeting, to whom you gave your public records requests, and since you stated in your email that you hand-delivered your request to the mayor's office, I am confused by your statement, quote, "Since there is a leak within the city hall, and how I wanted to know about this request just proved that emails are being shared outside the scope of the state law." That makes absolutely no sense.
Nope.
Now, Mr. White's last statement in his email, which I will read again, states, "Maybe those rumors about you and some loved ones' last wills or changing of them might be true or not. Don't have all the facts on this yet." This I will respond to in, and I'll say this, for transparency purposes. I am responding to this last statement in my unofficial capacity. This is me responding as my own person. A rumor is defined as a currently circulating story or report of uncertain or doubtful truth. Mr. White, I encourage you to look into the rumors, secure the true facts, and report them back to all of us. I have no idea whose loved ones' will I supposedly changed. But he's putting it out there, and I'm telling him, go for it. I want you to find those facts, and I want you to come to council, and I want you to share all those facts.
You're still not getting anything from me.
Pardon?
If you need to be in my will, I can put you there. I have bills.
You know, someone who knows how wills go, you know, there's attorneys, there's witnesses, and, you know, it's just aggravating, and not that. I'm a big girl. I can handle myself. It's with this council. I mean, this is what we put up with. This is what I sit upstairs in my house, and I'm, you know, trying to, you know, prepare, respond, I'm, you know, going through all my papers. respond, I'm, you know, going through all my papers because trust me, I'm a paper freak. And I save every piece of paper. You don't think? This is just minor.
That's just this week's reminders.
Yeah. So anyhow, like I say, you know, he welcomed me or asked me to, you know, read this, so there you go. Just, I'm sorry that he didn't feel that he could be a big boy and stick around.
Vicki, I know exactly how you feel. I had a similar thing last year when all these people were coming up about these cameras.
Okay, no. We're not going there. And don't sit there and tell me and say, you know how I feel. Kurt, you sit there and you run to him and tell him everything.
Decorum, please.
Is that the end of your letter, Vicki?
That wasn't my letter.
Or reading of the letter that was sent to you.
That was Mr. White's email to me.
So we're going to move on.
On another note. Logan? Really? But this is how it starts. Me and Finkhouse are calling each other buddies, back-room deals, good old boys, smoking cigars, telling lies. We don't need this. We, I know you meant it as a joke, but we don't need this.
It's, a lot of people know that it's a joke. The leading questions that become accusations, that's Mr. White's specialty.
Okay, guys.
But I didn't, I didn't expect it from you.
Oh, well, I mean, I said it was.
Where are you seeing this at, Mr. White?
It's on.
Is it in an article?
It's on Facebook. That's why we should get rid of Facebook.
I agree. I think this Facebook stuff, too many people post.
What committee do we need to?
It won't work. It won't stop.
To turn the comments off on the?
No, just turn the whole thing off.
Just turn the whole city's Facebook page off.
We can't turn just the comments, correct, Mr. Goldberg?
Yeah, we can't turn just the comments off. But we, there's nothing that says that we have to livestream it, and it doesn't even have to go through committee. Administration can make that decision.
But Kurt, what about your YouTube channel?
That's private. That's private. That's not city business.
Isn't that so nice that you can hide behind that?
But I'm worried about getting rid of the city.
Yeah, and I welcome you to go forward on that, too. I'm ready.
Go forward.
What you insinuated in your YouTube.
Which YouTube?
Yeah, that, is any of this relevant?
To the council meetings.
Yeah. Any of this relevant?
Now, the Facebook page that the city has, which is relevant, if we were to not stream the videos on there, we could still put them on the city's YouTube page.
Correct.
The next day. And we'd still be doing more than, I mean, the county doesn't put any of their meetings on anything.
But then what's stopping the comments from Facebook going to YouTube? Then we create another problem.
I think it's the whole live aspect. It's, oh, everybody's logged into this thing live. We've even had people sitting in the meeting, in the gallery, commenting on the meeting that they're in.
Yeah, just now.
We've had, we've had people show up that watch videos and come up because they're watching TV or watching on live feed, came up here.
Comment. Oh, great to meet you. Write that off two ten South Hill Street. Do you realize the viewership that we have? It's crazy.
Oh, I know.
We've had nothing like this. I think it's good.
We need to start selling ads. We'll take an ad break.
There you go.
Get us out of this.
I think it's good. Everybody knows what's going on up here. I think it's great. My opinion. I, I wouldn't censor anything, I wouldn't remove comments, I wouldn't do anything different. Just leave it. You don't have to watch it.
Comments, I'll be over you.
Half the stuff you're talking about, I have no idea what you're talking about because I don't watch it.
And there's even members in this community that are creating fake Facebook pages to comment on the comments on these meetings because they don't want to.
But you don't have to.
They would never do that.
You don't have to look at it. I don't have to look at it.
I don't look at it. I look at it at the moment.
There's quite so much that I don't know what's going on.
Eight hundred comments on a meeting.
Yeah.
Who has time to read all that?
Apparently somebody does.
Somebody has time. I don't, ain't me.
Read shot, it's me, thanks.
None of this is relevant to the, to the meeting. Back to relevancy. The case law you're looking for, the seminal case on changing the quorum and voting requirements is going to be state XRL AGV or sixty-one Ohio State three eight one, or three eight four. It's an old case, but it checks out. It's still good case law, cited in modern case law, and it stands for the principle that until that seat gets filled, the required voting shifts.
Can you email me that case law? Because I'd like to look at it.
Yeah, just on Ray's point, and no one's more upset by the fact that I'm going to mention her name again than me, but to give Carolyn some amount of credit, her antics have actually made this place more transparent. And I guess if she's accomplished anything, it was that because nobody was watching this stuff before and now, I mean, I bet, I bet you guys had about twenty or thirty people watching meetings live and now you have hundreds. And to me, like Ray said, that's a good thing. It can only, the more eyeballs that are on you guys, the better you'll, you'll do. I, I lived in Tiffin for a couple of years and the, the difference is, is really is jarring. The amount, the citizens care and then magically their councilmen and women do good work there. I mean, I know it's not Bussaras and they have a couple of colleges, but you don't, you don't see the vitriol and the, and the crap that you see here, but you do have citizens who care and then you have councilmen who have to do a good job because they're being watched. And so if Carolyn accomplished nothing else, it was that her antics did draw a bunch of eyeballs and for what it's worth, I think that's a good thing.
It even spurred another news company to start up.
Yeah, Andrew, we made you, right?
Clarissa Slater, thirty-six forty-five, State Route Four. The biggest thing that I will say is that we also have to take into account of the individuals who are actually physically unable to come to council. I spent some time out at, it keeps changing names. It used to be Heartland. And they are so thankful out there that we livestream because it does put vested interest in that interaction. You may not see it because you're not having it posted on, you know, the livestream comments posting, but they feel like they're actively engaging with the city government and they're able to see that in real time. They stop watching, they pick up the phone, and they speak to their relatives about it. So really, what you guys, by livestreaming, you are increasing community engagement and involvement in your city government. So I think it would be a disservice to the city to remove it. And I would say just fill out a hurt feelings report if you don't like what's being said. There's been plenty of things said about me that's not very kind and we just have to get over that fact and know that it's increasing engagement with city government. I don't think that's a bad thing at all.
Clarissa, that's a great idea. We can just put all the comments up there.
Yes, right there. And then you guys could answer real time.
Yeah, you could answer questions in real time.
Roundtable, yes.
There are streaming platforms that don't have a comment feed on them, like some of the churches use one called Ustream. We could move to that. Then the meeting would still be live.
Kurt, we have comments because you insisted there were comments there. Okay.
When did I insist there be?
Way back when we started livestreaming on there. You insisted that people had a right. Now, you're the quickest one to try to stop that.
Well, you know what? People don't have a right to make threats on these comments.
And threats is a whole different thing that gets picked up by the police department and by Bonnie.
Well, I know one active case that it might not be active anymore, but a threat was made against somebody and nothing was done about it. On this, on the city's Facebook live.
If it was a case, then it was investigated. If it was not a case, then it was not investigated. You called it a case, so I'm going to guess it was investigated. Then they made a decision as to what it was. Okay? You have to leave it. People do, we pay to do that.
Hey, okay, I'm not going to say it. I was going to say something and I sometimes learn as best as I don't say it. But moving on to more new business. The resignation of Councilwoman Shireman requires no action of council. We don't have to accept that letter. I'm pretty sure.
Correct.
It took effect, the date she said it takes effect, which was last Monday of last week. So.
Correct. And the board of elections is.
The five-day clock started then that Republican Central Committee has to wait five days before they can appoint. So they could appoint at any time.
Correct.
Basically. That was a question that was asked to me by somebody.
Kurt, we don't have to accept her resignation because if we didn't, what's the recourse? Like drag her in here and put her in the chair?
Okay. Other thing I think should be mentioned in new business, actually, I think it should have been in like an officer's or service director's report. We have a swearing-in of a new police officer.
Five thirty on Thursday.
Five thirty on this Thursday. Now, this isn't adding one, this is just replacing one that quit. So we're not adding more manpower. Because I, somebody had asked me that. They said, oh my God, they're adding, adding more people and we don't have the money. So just want to make sure that's clear. You okay, Ms. Sherrick?
Yep.
Any other new business? Nobody's absent and needs excuse, so what do we have for referrals, Ms. Wise?
South Sandusky Waterline Project to service and finance, Cruising with the Cops to Health and Safety, Alley Vacation of Pleasant Hill Drive to Plating, Airport Terminal Building to service and finance, Planning Commission Letter to Plating, Waterworks Debt Recovery to Finance, and Appointments to the Income Tax Board of Review to Finance.
I need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned at eight twenty-two PM.